Good evening. I'd like to open the August 26, 26, 2019 Harwich Board of Selectments meeting. As required by the open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audio tape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, I'd like to re- I'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone here for weekly briefing?
My name is Valerie Bell, and I'm your representative to the Cape Light Compact. And I haven't given an update in a long time, so I am here to do that very briefly. So last year, in the year 2018, 3,691 Harwich residents took advantage of the energy audit that Cape Light Compact does for people. And if you total up all of the savings that they got in insulation and lights and all of that, it was over a million dollars. So it's worth doing, and I do encourage anybody who hasn't had it done to go ahead and have it done. And if you've already had it done, that's okay. You can get it done once a year. You don't have to, it's not a one-and-done thing. You can go ahead and do it. And they do have some very good discounts on insulation. So if your house is in need of insulation, it's time of year to be thinking about that. We also want to give kudos to Cape Light Compact for helping Harwich achieve the Green Communities status. And, you know, without them, I don't know if we would've gotten through all the paperwork. But they did, and apparently, we got a little over $152,000 from the Green Communities program. So that's good. As far as the power supply goes, we're in the cheap part of the year right now. So the kilowatt, price per kilowatt hour went down a little bit, but it will go up a little bit for the second half of the year. And it does that every single year. And it's the same for the basic service from EverSource. It's just the way it goes. But we've been very competitive with basic service, most of the time actually being less than. And because we use Nextera Energy, all of the electricity that we use now is considered green. So it goes towards renewable energy. So you get a good product, good price, and it's green. So I think that's unusual. Also, Cape Light Compact has come out with a new offering for those who really, really want to do more as far as green energy. You can sign up for 50% local green, they call it, or 100% local green. And it's a small charge that they add to the bill, and that money is recycled into local renewable energy projects, including those on Cape Cod. So if you have the money and you feel like you want to do more, those offerings are there. And as usual, go to the website. There is a lot of information on that website about everything that they do. But I think they're doing a great job, and we've definitely, Harwich has definitely taken good advantage of everything they have to offer. Any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions? Michael?
I'd just say I had an energy audit done on one of our rental home, and it was a very, very easy process and all worth doing.
Yeah. Oh, that reminds me, if you are a renter, you also can have an energy audit done. You can do that. And so just because you rent doesn't mean you're closed out of the system. So you can do that. Yes, Ed?
Ed?
We had the audit done on our house, and simply the bump in our electric bill just from changing out the light bulbs was noticeable on the monthly bill. Considerably noticeable.
Yeah. So it's free, you know, it's, everybody should do it. And if anybody out there is worried about making the arrangements or having strangers come to your house, you can rest assured, it's all very professional, and all the contractors are definitely, they're vetted, you know, they, Cape Light Compact keeps an eye on them. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public comment? Yes, sir.
Ryan Castle, CEO of the Cape Cod and Island Association for Realtors, wanted to come, make sure you guys were aware and everyone's aware of a grant program we rolled out last week for Harwich homeowners who may have been impacted by the tornado on July 24th. If you had damage to your house, your eligible submit an application for a grant of up to $2,000. We have $20,000 available. It's part of what we do as Realtors, and to come into areas, it's only available to Harwich residents, and I'll tell you why, because of the actions you guys took. So because you actually declared an emergency under using our National Association of Realtors, Realtors Relief Foundation, only towns that have a declared emergency can, and you guys as a town declare a disaster, emergency, or whatever the declaration was, that qualified it. And so as such, the homeowners in Harwich can take advantage. Or renters, let me talk a little about what it has to cover. One, the property itself had to have been damaged, the building itself. And so it has to be, has to have that happen. The payments, the way we structure them, goes straight to either the landlord or your mortgage company. It's up to $2,000 as a grant, or the max of whatever your mortgage or rent payment is for the year-round property. The reason why that is, that is the median value of a mortgage in Harwich under the census data is $2,000, so that we're able to give up to that amount. And so you're able, they're able to apply with us, and pretty easy process to go through. We are only taking grant applications through September 30th, and we've had four or five grant applications already completed. Has to be a primary residence, and it has to have either a year, if it's a renter, that's renting as a primary residence, it has to be a year-round renter. We've had a lot of conversations about that. Can't be just tree downs on your property, has to be actually damage to the property. So we have those available. I have handouts, if people want them, pass them around town. We'll be continuing getting word out through September 30th. But thank you guys very much for allowing us to talk about this.
Thank you, Ryan. I was looking for my email, I was hoping you would be here. Ryan, can you give at least one of those handouts to Joe, and we can put it on our website?
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the information is on the town website.
Okay.
It was posted this afternoon, and there's links to the information and to the site itself.
Okay.
So it is on our main page.
Thank you very much. That's very generous. Moving next, Ed, is there anyone else for public comment? Carolyn? Nothing?
I'm sorry.
Moving to consent agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Don?
Yeah, before you proceed here, apparently last week was the only time anybody took me seriously about taking things off the consent agenda and putting them on a regular agenda. I don't feel like liquor licenses belong on the consent agenda, and I'm asking for that to be held separately.
Okay.
I'd like to hold B as well.
And we'll hold B as well. So Ed, you want to read the consent agenda?
I'd like the, Mr. Chairman, to present the consent agenda and move approval of the following items. A, request for approval for Harwich Chamber of Commerce's parade request on 9/8/19 at 11:30 a.m., parade route to include Freeman Street, Route 28, Doane Road, South Street, and Sisson Road. Parade ends at South and Doane Roads. Harwich officials notified and have approved. And then B and C will be taken separately.
We have two As.
And then we have a second A. A prime, approve the recommendation of the town administrator regarding a petition by EverSource Energy to install approximately 120 plus or minus feet of conduit cable under public road, and two handholds labeled 181/H2A and 181/H2B in Hardin Lane. And B prime, vote to grant award of easement for Verizon and EverSource Energy at 1464 Orleans Harwich Road, Route 39 at Fire Station 2, and sign.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Don?
Who's signing? Is that the board, or, on that last item, is it the chair?
Well, it's a easement, I believe. The paperwork has spots for all of our signatures.
It's actually in the signature.
I have it here in the signature block. Let me check.
I'm only asking a question because it's in a passive voice. Who's signing it?
The town clerk signs it. The EverSource easement, and the other?
That it.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, in the packet, there is a signature page for the board.
Okay.
With also notarization.
Okay.
On your packet, it's page 24.
Okay.
So that'll all be in there.
All right.
So that was the motion the board signed.
And there's also a portion where the clerk of the board of select needs to.
Needs to sign. Yeah. The both.
That was the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
We'll move then to B.
So B, I asked this to be taken out. There was a memo that circulated from Dan Pelletier, Water Superintendent, in regards to shooting fireworks off within 1,500, in the 1,500-foot buffer zone outside of the Zone 2 wells. Did I say that right there? Apparently, it landed on social media that there's a town bylaw that prohibits it. For the past two years, we've launched them inside of the Zone 2 buffer, and without complaint, without problem, without anything. But this bylaw now has been discovered.
Yeah.
It's voted at town meeting, so at the last Water Commissioners' meeting, they had a lengthy discussion about it, and they voted basically to give it to the Board of Selectmen because it's our bylaw, or the town bylaw, and that would be up to us to enforce the town bylaw. They voted also that if we voted no, and followed the bylaw, that they would allow them at Brooks Park at the tennis courts, which would change things a little bit, but that would be outside of the buffer zone, and certainly still viewable from in front of the community center, so nothing would change. It may add some additional details. Cindy and I talked briefly today. It may add a little bit more money for extra police details, and the Recreation Youth Committee would still have to approve it because it is in the park. So I sent you that memo.
Right.
Maybe late in the week, but you have that memo. I have not seen the bylaw yet, but apparently.
And I was busy, I didn't explore further. Dan, you want to comment further, or?
Sure. How you doing? Dan Pelletier, Water Superintendent. So like Mike said, I was aware of this this past January. Additionally, as Mike said, these have been going off for the past two years at Brooks Park, I mean at White House Field. So the whole thing began back in 2008 when DEP said, "We're going to regulate perchlorates." At the time, I believe it was a knee-jerk reaction by creating the buffer. The fireworks had been lit off there for longer than I can say. I haven't been around that long, so. They've been lit off there, we've never had a detection. For those of you who aren't aware, the Zone 2 of a well is the furthest reaches in which a well can draw water from in a drought situation. So the 1,500-foot buffer, in my opinion, really isn't protecting anything because the water within that buffer wouldn't make it to the well to begin with. White House Field, again, in my opinion, is a better site to light it off. It's safer. And again, that's, if there's any specific questions.
So in general, Michael, you're saying, and what you're saying is, is that it may be beneficial to move in any case to White House Field?
No, that's where it is.
That's where it is now?
Yeah. And I think.
Procedurally, it's your bylaw, and you're pushing us to make, to make a decision on that, so.
It's a town of Harwich bylaw.
Right. But procedurally, we can, as you suggest, we can vote to move ahead this year.
I don't think we can. It is a town bylaw voted by town meeting.
Okay.
So it's not, has nothing to do with the Water Commissioners, and has nothing to do with the Water Department, but it is a town bylaw.
So in that.
So I don't think we can.
So in that case, our hands may be tied. Ed?
No, I'm just saying. So it's okay.
Right. And that's what Dave just brought up. There isn't a prohibition of lighting them off within the Zone 2. The only prohibition is lighting them off outside the Zone 2 within the 1,500-foot buffer, which is counterintuitive.
Ed?
Well, as I understand it, there were some, the Water Commissioners have had some discussion about making an amendment to the bylaw.
Yes.
Or proposing an amendment to doing away with the buffer, but in fact.
We won't have the timing to do it.
But in fact, installing the prohibition of shooting, using it inside Zone 2.
We didn't get that deep into conversation. It was more, you know, the commission had a consensus vote that they would prefer it at White House Field as opposed to another location. They were all in acknowledgement that the regulation that was put in effect in 2008 was a bit excessive, and it's kind of where we are today.
Okay. Don, you have a view?
I'm just listening. I'd like to hear from Cindy to what the implications.
So basically, the chamber goes out, and we raise money through sponsorship. We have already secured sponsorship for everything that all of our costs are, the fireworks, the details, et cetera. So to throw maybe one or two more details, it's going to put a wrench into what we've already raised funds for. We'll do whatever you guys decide, but 10 days out? I'm magical, but it might not be that magical. So we'll follow whatever you guys decide.
Okay.
Anyone here? Michael?
We have a.
Norm?
This is news to me tonight. I sign off on the fireworks as the fire chief. I didn't know this was a problem. As far as I knew, we were okay, and it was explained well to me about the Zone 2 and the issue with the water.
Yeah.
But it was my understanding we were okay. There's an awful lot that goes into this permit. Several agencies have to look into it, have to approve it. And I feel, I feel badly that this has come up at this late date because it really, it's not just, well, we just call the fireworks guy, and he comes up and sets up the tubes and shoots them off. There's a lot that goes into this. You know, we have to look at who lives in the area. We have to look at where residents are. We have to look at, you know, where these things might land. We all have to plan for that. You know, just considering what we've just been through, the tornado, you know, just the hollow itself is, you know, there's a lot of brush down there. So this is a, you've thrown me a curveball.
Okay.
So I hope we can work this out. I agree, if it's a bylaw, we have to fix it. And like to your point, if we're violating bylaw, then yeah, that's an issue. But this is very late in the process to ask me to sign off on another location that we spent a lot of time finding a good, safe location.
Yeah. Thank you, Norm. Michael?
Norm, with that. And there's no, there's no lack of support from anyone on this board for fireworks. We've all pushed it for the last two years.
I understand.
So there's no lack of support. Somebody threw this in, Dan did his due diligence.
Yep.
And now we're faced with ignoring a town bylaw.
I understand.
Or picking another location. So with what you just said, is it possible? The second part of my question, Valerie, would be, could we get a legal opinion? We have another meeting on the 9th, but if we did the legwork for another location just in case, but we could certainly, we could certainly vote on this on the 9th, which is last minute, but I think we're, I think our hands are tied.
Well, let me put it to you this way.
The 9th would be a yes or no vote.
Saying what I have said, I'm not going to be the guy that cancels the fireworks for Cranberry Festival. We'll figure it out. But I'm just saying, in frustration, this is really a curveball that I didn't see coming.
We haven't seen it for two years.
No, and that's what we're trying to figure out.
That's what we're good at, is we'll fix it.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, I'm interested in the balance here because it's just, it sounds like there's a trade-off, and it doesn't sound like it's a very good trade-off. You're saying that it's potentially possible that we'd be exposing us to a fire risk more by moving it around?
Listen, my point being is that we have studied this location for years. We take it very seriously. And we have found a spot that we thought worked with the Water Commissioners and the town and everybody involved. We found this spot that worked. It was, we thought okay with the Water Commissioners, and we found it was extremely safe for all the spectators. Now, when you change that, you change that dynamics of what we've spent years figuring out. Now, I'm not saying that it's going to be, you know, a huge fire hazard to anybody, but we have not had the time to study it. It's not, we take it very seriously, and we're bound by guidelines too, by the state. The fire marshal is very stringent on where you can let fireworks off. So we would have to get approval from the, you know, the fire marshal if we changed the location. They have approved after our, my signature, they have approved where we're going to do it. So it would take some hustle on our part to change the location.
At this point, it's a yes-no vote.
Well, that's what I was asking. I mean, you're basically, if we shifted gears, we're going into the unknown.
Yes.
Because this is what's been vetted, this is what minimized the fire risk and minimized the exposure to the water.
Absolutely.
So we're just winging it if we do something different.
We are.
Ed?
Well, having been involved with the Cranberry Festival for quite a number of years and responsible for, in previous years, when we were using the parking lot at the softball fields, which is in the Zone 2 area, as the launching stuff, we had to put up thousands of yards of snow fencing around that site along the retirement community at the fields to keep folks away. So if you put them on the tennis courts, you probably, we're probably going to need to run fencing all around the hollow, most of Brooks Park. And then there's a number of buildings which are within an 800-foot distance from those tennis courts, which, as I remember it, we're going to have to, the details will be to provide fire watches for each of those buildings. And so it's not just potentially an additional detail, it's probably more the four or five.
Well, you take into account things like White House Field. That's a beautiful asset that we have in town. But the fireworks folks, I mean, they have to figure down to the precise angle of how these tubes go off, so that we don't damage White House Field with embers. So you do the same thing, are we going to have problems on the tennis courts? So we just redid, you know, maybe they're pavement. I don't play tennis, so I don't know, but Brooks Park, you know, where cars park, you know, there's just a lot that goes into it. So again, at this late date, this really, you know.
But we have to, yeah, I agree, Norm. Thank you. It's been well vetted to move it.
And I'll also say, while I'm standing here, if someone knew that there was a problem with the bylaw, it would have been nice to know about this 10 days prior to this show.
The question we're mainly is, this is the only site that makes sense, so the vote turns out to be yes-no vote at this time. To Michael's point, this either is a way from an emergency standpoint, or some way we can justify doing this. Joel, maybe contact the legal counsel and see, according to the bylaw, what the language might be.
So I will tell you, Mr. Chairman, if we're talking about Chapter 122 hazardous materials, excuse me, the rest of the bylaw, the statement that was read as prohibited acts, which gets to the fireworks, but Items 3 and 4 within that identify the Board of Water Commissioners responsible for enforcement and administration of the bylaw. So I think the question may be if the board, this board is being asked to approve an event, that's one thing, but the administration, enforcement, and penalties would come under the purview of the Water Commissioners, according to the bylaw.
So explain that to me. They can decide not to enforce it?
Well, if I may, it says enforcement, the board or any authorized agent may issue a written order to enforce the provisions of the bylaws or regulations thereunder, which may include requirements to cease and desist. Any person who violates any provision of the bylaws punishable by a fine of $300 each day or their part, part thereof is its own event.
Yeah. Alan?
Yeah. Yeah, this came up at our past meeting. Little history. For many, many years, when fireworks were set off, they were set off at Brooks Park when there was only one or two tennis courts, and there was all sandy area out there, and it didn't seem to present a problem. And then it moved down the street when it really got big with the Cranberry Festival back in the Sheldon days. And packed that White House Field with all the people you could possibly put in there. I mean, it was just a massive show. And we got a new Water Superintendent who brought the issue up. I want to say it was either '06, '07, somewhere in there. And all of a sudden, I mean, I wasn't involved in any of it at that time, but all of a sudden, you couldn't fire the fireworks off anymore at Brooks, or I didn't know White House was eliminated, but I didn't realize this bylaw showed up. And as it stands now, I mean, we were all disappointed by the fact that the bylaw did show up, and that Superintendent at the time had pushed that case. So as we looked at all the documents and everything, and all the issues that go with it, for my eyes, I think White House Field is perfect. It's fine off back, it doesn't infringe on any, and the groundwater flow goes nantucket sound. So, you know, we got room there. And in all the years, they did them at Brooks, and nothing has showed up in the water at all. So, I mean, it's 25 years at least.
So, thank you, Alan. Joel, if I can paraphrase your, what you've told us, we could vote to approve and throw back to the waterways to enforce if they so wish? Is that the?
I believe that's how the bylaw reads, meaning this board has the authority to weigh in on the application before you. If it runs afoul of the bylaw, this bylaw is meant to be administered and enforced by the Board of Water Commissioners.
So if you're looking for us, we could do something like that and throw it back to, back to your discretion to, if you wish to enforce it.
Well, Water Commission is supporting the fireworks, so we voted.
Right. I'm trying to walk through this maze of how we do this. Michael, you got it?
We thought, we thought the bylaw.
I'm hoping we approve the request for approval for Harwich Chamber of Commerce 30th Annual Fireworks Display as part of the Harwich Cranberry Festival on 9/14/19 at 8:00 p.m.
Seconding.
Any more discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Dan, I got to send the ball back to you. That was beautiful.
It's back to you guys.
Apologize for any confusion.
No confusion.
Okay. Thank you. Now we will take up C. And Ed, you're going to recuse yourself on this one? Don, I'll throw it to you.
Yeah. Again, I don't believe that liquor licenses are doing real business. It belongs in the consent agenda. That's for like National Cookie Week or something. It's not for actual business, business. Having said that, you wouldn't know by this until you look at the packet. It's not in the community center building. It's behind the community center, that's, they're asking for the license. I'd be willing to make a motion to approve the license as requested for two-day beer and wine license, 9/14 through 9/15/19.
Second?
I'm going to second for discussion.
Okay. Michael?
This agenda says revision in big yellow letters on top.
Right.
And then it says Harwich Community Center also in yellow. Can someone tell me what the original agenda said?
It said the cultural. It said the cultural center.
Okay. I sent an email to staff today, which I believe the front office staff is our staff as well.
Right, yep, agreed.
And I asked for a copy of the original agenda because I believe, and I asked Joe this question, but it might have been late in the day when I sent the email back, we had an open meeting law violation last year reported against us from Ron Beatty.
Yeah.
And it was because of a revised agenda. And I believe that the AG's office came back and said, "On a revised agenda, you have to leave the agenda item, draw a line through it, and put the new information underneath of it." So, it's clearly visible to the public what changed. Did you have a chance to look at that today, Joe?
I did, and I apologize for not getting back, trying to prep for everything that was going on tonight. Excuse me, without knowing the particulars of the complaint and the complainant here in Harwich, I would say that the Division of Open Government oftentimes, when they're tasked with weighing in on an alleged violation, they look at the faith of the actors, if you will. And I will tell you that staff acted in good faith to identify a revision, to identify the change. However, the point is well-taken going forward. We will ensure that when there are deletions, there's a strike-through. When there's addition, there's an underline. The entirety of that will be highlighted. I do think, however, that staff was acting in good faith in this manner, and I'm hopeful that if we were ever challenged, we would survive that.
Michael?
And I agree that staff was acting in good faith. I do think that something needs to be addressed, and I would ask Joe to put it in his notes. If a board member asks staff for an agenda, for the record, the staff should give it to them. And it shouldn't be sent to the town administrator and the assistant town administrator to decipher what the ask is when the ask is so easy. That staff works for us as well, and I think that they may be losing sight of that. Town administrators not need to be copied in these requests.
Point taken, and we'll do that. Just one, Patty did forward this to me, and my response to her was basically what Joe said is, you know, crack this, and in the future, be sure we save all revisions, because that is a good point. It was an oversight. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna have more to say on what Michael said in the selectman's report. But having said that, this is a public document. The one that got revised was actually published.
It was, yeah.
So, the request was to get the one that was actually, I saw the emails, it was like ridiculous. The request was, let me see what the original email, what the original agenda said, and that's why he asked what it did say tonight. The fact is, that's, once it's published, it is the agenda. It's a public document, and it's being amended as a publicly posted document. So, somebody asks for what the original one said, that's not creating anything. That's like, you've gotta keep an audit trail of these things, because once it went live, it was public.
I understand your point.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough. And I actually, sometimes I download those, and I was hoping I had to save the download of the first one, but I didn't this time. Okay, good points, but are we at a point where we want to vote now? All in favor?
Aye.
Three and one person approves themselves. Okay. Moving on to public hearings, we have a public hearing from James Young, appealed to the Harwich Harbor Management Plan. Let's see, who wants to start this? John, James, start. Do you want to respond or vice versa?
Appellate, gentlemen.
Okay.
I'm so lucky to just do that, huh? All right, James Young, good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, so, my wife and I are appealing the definition of LOA in the Harwich Harbor Management Plan. 2003, my wife put her name on the 20-foot recreational list. And then, back in early 2019, we're contacted by the Harbor Master's Office saying that we're eligible for a slip. So, we elected to take the slip. At that time, and to this date, we do not have a boat, and we're under a different impression than what the Harbor Master's Office was telling us on how the measurement of the boat was taken. So, took a few measurements of some boats of interest, got back to the staff, and stated that the boat was too big for the slip. And like I said, we were under a different impression. So, that led me to setting up a meeting with the Harbor Master and going over the management plan. And under the definition, I feel that our boat of interest complies. And he was saying a different policy is what is in place. But the problem that I have is there's no language in the management plan anywhere stating what the actual policy is. So, we set up a meeting, we had a discussion on that. And then, a couple of weeks later, under the agendas for Waterways Committee was a proposal to change the definition of LOA to exactly what I had discussed with the Harbor Master at that time. So, I thought that was kind of an interesting situation. So, appealed the definition. The Waterways Committee was voted down. I think they kind of had an issue with the fact that we don't have a boat, which is a good point. But also, why would we purchase a boat that we potentially could not put in the boat slip? The boat of interest, I agree, cannot fit there. But per the definition, the boat of interest complies, and we would like to be accommodated in an appropriate-sized slip. The Waterways Committee and the Harbor Master feel that I'm trying to bypass the list of the 30-foot slips, which is not the case. The plan is misleading, not accurate. I picked that out, brought it their attention, and has led us to where we are today. In a nutshell, that's about it. It's a real first-world problem I have here, so...
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing it in here. And John, do you want to talk about the policy then? Just so I'm not showing my bias, I actually ran into the same issue where I was, I prevented from being a little bit electric bolt because it's too big.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, John Rendell, Harbor Master, good evening. So, our current regulation in the Harbor Management Plan has been in place for years. Certainly, since the adoption of the Harbor Management Plan. And even prior to that, obviously, I wasn't around back then. But we do have people in the office. I've asked Michelle Morris, our waterway specialist, to be here tonight because I think she has some historical perspective on what our regulation is. I'm just gonna read you what the regulation, the definition in the Harbor Management Plan says. And it specifically states, under Section 2 of Definitions, "For the purpose of determining seasonal and year-round dockage fees and/or mooring classifications, the extreme fore aft measurement of a boat in feet and inches in a straight line parallel to the center line of the top of the transom to the foremost extension, which includes the pulpits and sprits." So, that definition was put in their place specifically to not charge the boater for everything that was aft of the transom. Is all that I can figure. It was specific to determining dockage fees.
And John, I can hear, that's the part that's confusing is you've separated out one-size measurement for fees versus the size of boat you can have on the slip.
Sure.
I don't know if we can clarify that, or I don't know. I do agree, that's confusing when you read it.
Okay, well, that is the definition that's been in the Harbor Management Plan that I'm enforcing since the Harbor Management Plan was put in place, okay? So, at some point, there was a determination to specify that point. But the actual physical space, when you speak to a boat's length overall, that's the entire length of the boat that determines whether there's enough room to fit in a slip or not. And as Mr. Young said, he recognizes that anything beyond 24 feet becomes a problem. The boat that he would like to put in place would not fit in the slip. And I don't think he argues that point. There's only so much space in our marina for certain-size boats. If you look at our current marina layout and you watch boats come and go in our 20-foot slips, it's tight. And so, on the applications that people fill out for a waitlist, it states in each slip category that boat's length overall up to 24 feet for a 20-foot, and then, it defines for 30, 40, and we now have a 50-foot slip category. So, it's defined on there. It's stated. We've been enforcing this regulation for a long time. And again, Michelle is the one who often communicates with people who are coming off the waitlist and people who are getting put on the waitlist. And in Mr. Young's case, this past winter, well before he came up for a slip, he called the office and asked about this issue. And Michelle spoke to him and told him what the definition was, what he needed to comply with for boat size. And then, again, when his name came up for a slip, she again talked to him about length overall. His wife, the slip permit is under his wife's name. They came up for a slip in 2016 and then again in 2017, of which they passed on, which they're allowed to per regulation, and on the third attempt, they decided to take it. I think there is a responsibility on the people on the waitlist to know, you know, what they're getting into, what the regulation is. And in all this time, this is the first time this has been appealed, that I know of. And I've asked my staff, and so, I mean, as I stated in my memo, can it be clear? Yeah, and I'll make it clear. Mr. Young said that at a Waterways, I put forward a change, and it was based upon our conversations. We've had, I counted, 48 changes to our Harbor Management Plan since it was adopted. It's a working document, and when things come up that aren't perfectly clear, I think it's my job as the Harbor Master to try to correct them. And I'll do that. Can it be a little more clear, to your point? Yeah.
But my point, Don, is that if you were to clarify it, the issues would still be the same. It would be one measurement for the fee charge and a separate one based on the size of the boat.
Absolutely.
You may explain it better, but it's not gonna change the facts.
Right, I mean, the space in the marina is not gonna change. And the length of the boat that's allowed in each particular slip will not change. I think what we'll do is that this definition that speaks to determining dockage, we will put, and under Appendix B that speaks to fees, and we won't get rid of the verbiage, we'll move it. And then, we'll put, you know, the definition for the physical part of the boat that can fit in the slip. I mean, we will make it clear, and I've stated that. When Mr. Young came and sat down with me to have a discussion, I said I would consider your criticism, and I have of the regulation, and I've done that. And I will be before you. I didn't want to propose the change now. One, he asked that it not go in front of you until he had an opportunity to appeal, so I've respected that. And I didn't want to confuse things, so I'll come forward with the change after this appeal has been resolved.
Okay.
But understand, what he's asking for is to accommodate him in a 30-foot slip. There, the waitlist for a 20-foot slip is somewhere in the range of 10 to 12 years. The waitlist for a 30-foot slip is close to 20 years. And I think by bypassing those people on the 30, to award Mr. Young a 30-foot slip is not the right action.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll let Mr. Young make one more comment, then I'll go.
I have a question on John.
Excuse me. Don, you have something to follow up to John, then we'll, a question for John, then we'll get...
Yeah, I'm trying not to be facetious, Mr. Chair, but what plan? I just called up the plan that's through your part of the portal on the town's site, and it doesn't match up with the yellowed-out, highlighted section from your...
That was the Waterways.
No, I know what it is. I'm just saying...
If you go, Mr. Howell, to a Harbor Management Plan, and you go to Section 2 under Definitions,
Got it right here.
You'll find length overall, and if you read that, it's what I just stated. For determining dockage, it should be defined. That's what I'm talking about.
I'm under 2.0.
Okay, under length overall definition.
For the purpose of determining seasonal and year-round dockage fees and/or mooring classification, the extreme fore aft measurement of a boat in feet and inches in a straight line parallel to the center line from the top of the transom to the foremost extension includes pulpits and sprits.
That's what I, yes, that's what I'm referring to.
Okay, but I'm just saying, what you sent in your packet here...
I didn't send that.
That was mine. That's what he's proposing to change, but not yet, to make it clear, because it's not...
I just want to make sure Don understands that the Harbor Management Plan is in the computer, but that document on our desk is from Mr. Young.
It's from Mr. Young, so it's a different document.
It is and it isn't, because it's the agenda from the Waterways Committee.
But they didn't take action on it.
They didn't take action on that yet, Don.
As I stated, I will come before you as the board to...
This is from April.
But they haven't decided yet.
Can I?
John?
If I may, sir, I have gone through the Waterways with a proposed change, and they have recommended approval, but I have not taken this to you for final approval because of this appeal issue. Mr. Young had asked that it not through the town administrator until he had an opportunity to come before you. And there's been a couple of delays for various reasons for him to come before you. So, I have held off to propose that change that I went to the Waterways with. I've waited to present it to you until this appeal is over. So, if that's, that could be the confusion. Mr. Young put that in his packet to show that I had gone through the Waterways.
But again, my point was that that was not a document that Mr. Young manufactured. It was actually the agenda of the Waterways Committee from April.
That's correct. It's in his packet.
That's all I'm asking. Okay. Mr. Young?
Yeah, it's a little confusing at times. So, going back to what John says about dockage fees, that's all true, and that works out well for the boater, you know. But nowhere in the management plan does it state the policy that he is putting in place. Yes, it's dockage fees, but there's no specific definition, or per the definition that's in there, like comply, the boat complies. Right now, just on the East Dock, there's a number of boats that are over the 24-foot LOA that he states is the policy. The policy doesn't exist anywhere. That's really what happened during the course of our meeting is we brought this issue up, and down the road, it's gonna be clarified. So, this potentially wouldn't happen to anybody else. I picked up on this, and I feel like for a policy that is not accurate or correct and is misleading, why should I be negatively impacted, you know? The Coast Guard definitions of length overall, you know, in the packet, there's stuff supporting all of what I'm trying to get across, you know? You know, you call up Grady White and say, you know, I'd like a 22-8, 2019 boat delivered to Sacotucket Harbor if I could afford it, and the LOA on it is 22 feet. So, if I made that purchase, if I was able to do that, and I put it down there, I can't put that, I just spent, you know, I don't know what that boat costs, $60,000 per this management plan? That boat complies. So, you're gonna tell me that there's, just this is our policy, you can't put that boat in here? Well, you still can't show me anywhere that is the policy. And there's boats down there right now in the twenty-foot recreational slips that are over what he is saying. I don't know what else to tell you.
Okay. I'll let, I actually think the measurements are fairly well-defined in there, but maybe I've missed it.
We measure every boat that comes into harbor. Every boat we measure, both for determination of dockage and length overall. So, you know, we spend a lot of time going out, measuring boats, communicating with people, getting on the waitlist, taking, assigning slips from the waitlist. You know, we made, and we've been very consistent through the years. I can't speak before my arrival, but I know Michelle. And she's meticulous, and she enforces our regulations when it comes to this. So I want to be clear. We don't have, I think in his packet, he said we had twelve thirty-foot transient slips. We have twelve transient slips. We have three thirty-foot transient slips. So we would have to either give up one of those or we'd have to jump the waitlist.
Yeah.
John said, you know, the difference between a twenty-foot list and a thirty-foot list, you know, the amount of years. So we waited sixteen, sixteen years, and here we are. And try to stay, you know, consistent, what he was saying, with everybody. It doesn't hold true, because there's boats right there right now that are over it. And I hate to blow up the spot for people, but, you know, it's not fair. I support the change. Unfortunately, it's a policy that needs to be addressed. It is being addressed, and I guess that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
John, you have another comment?
Just in case of additional questions, if anyone keeps getting.
Yes, I appreciate your appeals. It's difficult for us to go against the harbor master and his people that have said they measure the boats. And so, my inclination is to deny this. But any other comments or taking action?
A couple of comments. I guess first to James, thank you for the appeal and the amount of thought you put into it. And I think I agree with you that you found something that's not in there that should be in there. Thinking about the last twenty years and the fact that nobody else found it, in my mind, doesn't give us the right to change how John runs the harbor for the town. I feel for you, but I owned a marina. And in the private sector, this would have been about a two-minute conversation, and the marina owner would have said, "See ya," or two hundred dollars more a foot for your boat. We just redesigned this harbor. And we went through lengthy, lengthy, lengthy meetings looking at diagrams showing what size boats could go where. And I think a lot of time and effort went into that plan to show where those boats would fit and how everybody could navigate in and out of that harbor. The waiting list, I know several people that are on that waiting list that often joke, "Can't you get me a slip? Can't you get me a slip?" It's run very, very tight, and Michelle doesn't take suggestions about anything. The length overall to determine fees that's mentioned in two-point-oh, it's clear to me that it mentions to determine fees in two-point-oh and not overall length of the boat. So that piece of it is very, very clear to me. And I almost think that's a gift from the town of Harwich. But if we make a statement that we're going to allow an up-to-thirty-foot boat in a twenty-foot slip, we need to have twenty-to-thirty-foot slips, thirty-to-forty-foot slips, and fifty-to-sixty-foot slips if we're going to do it that way. And I think based on all the math that went into this and how many feet of dockage that we have and how we're going to pay for the twelve million dollars or ten million dollars that we just borrowed, it all plays into it for me. And I just don't see how we can allow a thirty-foot boat or up-to-thirty-foot boat, twenty-eight-foot boat, to go into a twenty-foot slip. And I think we would really be opening up a can of worms for all of the people that are on that. And I appreciate you put in your memo to us not to use that as an argument. I really do appreciate it. But I spent a lot of time reading yours. I spent a lot of time reading the plan. And I just don't see how we can grant this, grant you the slip.
Any other discussion? If not, we should take a motion one way or the other.
I just have one.
What? Use the mic, please, and this, yeah, I'm sorry. You have to use the mic because we're on TV.
So, I know, it's tricky. Boat down there right now, twenty-six, or, yeah, twenty-six-six. Another one right next to it, twenty-six-six. I didn't even go on the west end dock. There's a few others that are close to twenty-five feet. So what do I do? I just get the short straw?
Yeah, at this point, we're getting the he says, she says. And they've said they've measured the boats. And so I think we have to rely on.
They're there.
Yeah, the harbor master. So I, Michael?
I move that we deny the appeals to the harbor management plan by James Young.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Ready for a vote? More discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Three, four, and one opposed. We feel for your situation, but we have, as Michael said, we have a lot of stuff going into this. Moving next is the proclamation request National Suicide Prevention Month. Is someone to speak to that? Joe, are we?
Mr. Chairman, I would simply say, as you can see right there in the packet, this is a request that came in to staff. Pretty straightforward. Staff has no objection to the proclamation.
And we've approved this proclamation in years past. It's an important issue, so, Michael?
I move that we approve the proclamation request, recognition of National Suicide Prevention Month, vote to approve the week of September eighth through the fifteenth, named Suicide Prevention Awareness Week.
Second.
Second. It's good, because when you read the papers, this seems to be an increasing problem. So all we can, more we can, anything we can do to help, we should be for. So all in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is a tornado damaged tree on Route one-twenty-four. Discussion, possible vote. And this is a huge tree that we've had pictures of. We lost a tree, blew over. And Joe, I think you have some updated information. The request that this get down is, can we put a bench or some recognition of this, which maybe we call a historic tree there? And we're trying to comply with, see what we can do, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the update is from the administrator. He confirmed and has photographic evidence that a portion of the tree that was removed and is at the landfill is still accessible. There's three parts of it, and it's rather large, in addition to whatever may be taken from what's still on Route one-twenty-four. So there are materials available if the board is inclined to do some sort of recognition or token, I suppose.
My follow-up question is, maybe, Michael, maybe you have the answer. Maybe you're the one to ask. But is there a group or someone looking to try to, what they want there? A bench or a sign or?
Several people have called, a couple have emailed. Right after the storm, somebody emailed and asked that we didn't take down the rest of the tree that was there. But now that it's down, a bench seems to be the consensus at this point. But I think if we vote not to allow anything to happen to that stump and buy ourselves some time for people to come forward with ideas. One fellow in town, Tom Birch, said he would donate time and material to help make a bench out of it. He said he would help spearhead the project.
Okay.
So I think if we just buy ourselves a little time to organize a group.
Are you ready to make a motion?
I don't think we need to.
One of the other suggestions was to either off of the stump that's still in the ground or the next piece up that's out at the landfill, cut a slice out of it and preserve it, sand it, and sort of, as was in the, I guess, on social media, outline the sort of human events that have occurred that the tree over, sort of watched over in Harwich would be an interesting display.
Okay. Put that against Don?
Yeah, I just want to be clear, because if we don't do a motion, my question is, is somebody going to just go down and grind the whole thing down to the ground? I think we kind of have to be on record that we don't want that to happen.
I put in a possible vote, because I thought we might want to go ahead and do that to just stop it. And because we've already had two ideas going forward. Michael?
I move that we vote to preserve the stump and instruct DBW not to do any further work on the stump until we come up with a plan.
Second.
Further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
So unanimous vote? Next item is, it's come to my attention that we have a huge sewer construction phase going on. And do we want to have, as I think we probably should, is a groundbreaking ceremony. I'm looking forward to some discussion and thoughts on that. Don?
I'm going to repeat for the third time that if this had been a school, if this had been a fire department building, if it had been anything, and we found that we couldn't finish it, we wouldn't have started it. And I, for one, will not be part of any of this. I'm not going to vote for any more contracts. It belongs back at town meeting. We got tapped out of money. If somebody who worked for me had been more than thirty percent off, I'd be looking to see who I was going to fire.
Any other comments? Michael?
Well, I think no matter what, we still have contract one, which was awarded.
It was, yes.
So I think, I mean, why not? I think the more we can do to educate people on what we're doing. I'm still reading that we should have done Harwich Port first and that we shouldn't be in East Harwich. So I think the more we can do, why not have a groundbreaking?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I think we could have a grieving ceremony. I think that we may lose many valuable residents in our town because of the increased cost to the people who, there are many people who I think will never move into an affordable housing setup. There are people in my family who have moved to Maine, New Hampshire, organic farmers, wooden boat builders, people who added a lot to this community. And my husband and I, we're restoring an antique house that needs a lot of work. It's a valuable, adds charm to the community. But if the taxes increase at the expected rate because of the searing project, people like us would prefer to go somewhere else where we can be independent. And I think that there may be many other valuable people who, because of the searing project and the expense, will leave Harwich. And Harwich can become more elite and more of a place where there's incredible luxury and then the very bare-bones, basic people who support that luxury. But I don't think that's an authentic community. And I would not be able to celebrate the beginning of the searing project. I think there are alternatives that haven't been explored because, well, I don't know why. I can't say because, but composting toilets are much more viable than maybe the idea that many people have in their mind when they first hear them mentioned. There's a company in Massachusetts, Clivus Multrum, that manufactures them. They're used at the national seashore. I think they're used at Nickerson State Park and other commercial. There are many other ways that we could manage this that would really be better for the environment, too, because the searing project has an enormous carbon footprint, uses incredible amounts of electricity and energy. Incredible, obviously, the expense reflects all of that. And so I just wanted to encourage you to put the brakes on this project. I appreciate Don Howell's representation. And I think there are many people who don't have the time, energy, resources to be here and speak, but who agree with my point.
Yes. Well, thanks for those comments. I would, we have to almost go back to the beginning where, you know, we aren't moving ahead with the searing project because we just wanted to do so. We were required to do that by state and federal regulations and a lawsuit by the Conservation Law Foundation. And the, you know, I want to start, because we've had committees, we've gone through this many years. The, a lot of those alternatives were looked at not only by Harwich that you mentioned, but at Cape in general. And not one size fits all. Turns out, I think, we have a more densely populated area like in East Harwich. It makes sense to do sewer. In the more rural areas, there are other options that we're trying to look at, some alternatives to keep the costs down. We're looking at, we did gain zero percent funding to help that along. I do recognize, because no one likes taxes, and it's a problem. And we're trying to, there's a lot of things going into this. But at this point, it's been a lot of work going forward. And I think some recognition of where we've gotten to makes some sense. And that's, I would look at a groundbreaking ceremony. But we keep looking at the costs and still meet our obligations to clean the environment. I think it's also important to state that, you know, no one likes the increase from their estimate. But the estimates came in really closely. So I think those are real, were real numbers. And the bottom line, we still have to move ahead. We do have options, which we're exploring, and that is alternatives. Also delaying some of the future projects. So it meshes with our capital outlay plan and a way to keep taxes at least level. So we keep looking at those options. But I, you make good points. We just, at this point, we need to move ahead, I think. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to be really clear. I'm not talking about the magnitude of the contract cost. I'm not talking about whether it's a good thing or a bad thing. I'm talking about the fact that we're losing faith of the voters of the town who approved something that was a little over twenty-two million dollars. We're whittling down contracts to force it into what we have remaining. There's no good faith in this thing. It has to do with town meeting vote. The approval for the project was at a certain price. We messed up royally. And in the future, I'm not sure what accrued value we're going to have for us being believed on anything when we're blown by the fact that all we needed to do was go back when we found out that those bids were that high and ask town meeting for approval to do a project at the current rate. But bigger than that is the fact that you're going to go to town meeting, you're going to say, "Hey, we've already done this. We need to do that." Nobody sitting in this audience, nobody sitting at home, knows the impact the first contract is going to play on their tax bill because it hasn't happened yet. The borrowing just occurred. So we're asking people to go forward with this, celebrate it. Kind of absurd, but celebrate it. And then possibly award a follow-on contract that does not include the promise that the town meeting warrant had, which is this will complete all phases of the comprehensive management wastewater plan for Phase Two. This will complete that. That's what the statement was that we told people. It will not complete it. And you haven't even seen what the impact is on your budget. Because the tax bills haven't come out yet.
This is a milestone of reacting and complying with what we're legally required to do. And it's a huge project. We should at least acknowledge some milestones, all the work that went into it. We've had probably twelve, probably fifteen years of water monitoring data, of selectmen's meetings, of town meetings. You know, we can look at something going forward, but we should at least acknowledge where we are. Yes, sir?
Sandy McClarty, live on Pleasant Bay. This reminds me of the big dig. And if my memory serves me, Mitt Romney refused to attend the ribbon-cutting ceremony because of the gross excess. because of the gross excess expenditures. So in the same thought, you know, we're talking about the ceremony. I think somebody could say, we don't really want to celebrate. Yes, we have to do this. I don't know all the details, but why celebrate something that's gotten out of control? And I would say there's history. Mitt Romney didn't cut the ribbon because it went from, I think it was sixteen billion to seventy-plus billion. And this project, as Don said, the good faith of the people is being stressed. And I'm one of those people that, I'm losing faith in the goodwill. I see construction going up at an alarming rate. And then we're saying, well, we need this sewer because of an environmental issue. I'm a business owner. Business people know how to sell projects. It's called greenwashing. You can quickly pick up lingo to sell something. You know, hey, I got fluorescent light bulbs. They're energy efficient. You need these. You want to save the earth. Oh, wait a minute. They have mercury. We got a new product. It's LED. So now you should get rid of those. And rah rah rah. And let's, and the companies that manufacture this quickly adapt the lingo to sell their product. That is their end goal. And I feel like this company that gave us the estimate, they've done these estimates for other towns. They've been sued by other towns, as far as I understand. And they ramp up the lingo. We gotta do this. We gotta do this. And they push all the buttons. If we gotta do something, we gotta bite the bullet. We're all in it together. But then we keep building up these homes. I just heard of a proposal, maybe a hundred units in East Harwich. I hope that's just a bad dream. But the goodwill of the people is stressed. And I think having a celebration might fly in the face of some people. It certainly flies in my face to celebrate something that I feel has been mismanaged and maybe even pushed down the road faster than it should have for ulterior motives. I don't want to, I don't know that. I wouldn't, you know, accuse someone directly of that without knowing more. There's a lot I don't know about this. But I'm in those celebration mood.
Okay. Ed?
Yeah, well, you know, Mr. McCaskill talked about having a cutting ceremony, groundbreaking. I don't know what you want to call it, but I don't know. He talked about it in the realm of being a celebration rather than acknowledgement that the project's beginning. And I think that's a worthwhile thing to acknowledge, you know. And I don't want to re-discuss the whole issue over the difference in the cost estimate and how it came in as opposed to how the contract came in. But, you know, I do know that from the time the contract, the estimate was first put out and to the point when we actually went to bids, we made several material changes to the requirements in the project that changed its cost. But that's, I think, underwater under the bridge at this point. We have signed a contract for the first portion of Phase Two. It's sort of canceling the contract and paying the horrendous costs that would cause. I think we need to begin the process.
Yeah, there, I would just, there are no alternative motives to this, by the way. There's no alternative or side motives to this. You know, we're trying to react to regulatory requirements, the potential lawsuit. CLF keeps threatening to, we're not, we're moving too slowly, by the way. We're trying to stretch it out as long as we can because of the financial concerns. I would argue that from a, if there's a mismanagement, it's because it took too long to get the estimate in. So we went in with a rough estimate before its time. But this, one more comment, then we'll decide on. Right now, we're just talking about groundbreaking ceremony or not.
Which other ways of dealing with the nitrogen loading besides sewers were considered?
If you look at the CWMP, there's a section in there where they've looked at the protective barriers. There's, we also refer to the work done by the Cape Cod Commission. And one of the towns, I think it was Falmouth, tried to use compost toilets. And my understanding is they set aside money for that. No one took advantage of it. Because if you have an existing house, they're very expensive to put in.
Well, nothing like the expense of the searing.
Well, individually, but I'm just saying what happened. And so, you know, they're out there. We keep looking at things in the future. But we're not discussing that now. We're just discussing the groundbreaking ceremony. Michael?
Just a short answer. Yes, we did look into that. I do keep hearing and reading that there's a conspiracy amongst all of us. East Harwich was chosen because of the watershed in East Harwich and because we could do a joint project with another town, actually three other towns. But Chatham is taking our sewage. And that's why we went there. And we're getting credits from the state for doing that first. So it has nothing to do with development in East Harwich. And as a matter of fact, the last board voted sewer regulations that don't allow any increase in density out there at all. So it's current zoning only. Town meeting would have to change that. So if the conspiracy is that we're doing this so that we can develop East Harwich, that was taken care of when the board voted the sewer regulations. So that's got absolutely nothing to do with it. And to Ed's point, we certainly have hit a milestone. I can't agree with Don more. And when it gets time to vote contract number two at this point, I'm voting no. And voting that we go back to town meeting. But this is, for me, no matter what, we have the first forty-year comprehensive wastewater management plan ever approved in the state of Massachusetts. They usually do twenty, sometimes they do thirty. We managed to get them to go out to forty years to spread that money out. And to your point about people leaving town, a lot of my friends leaving town. Our firefighters and police officers finding themselves living in Yarmouth and out of town. They can't afford to live here. I voted no on the budget this year. I agree with you. But on this, we have no choice. We were sued. There was a stay. And by acting on it as fast as we acted on it, we get zero percent financing on this first phase, which unlike the town administrator's estimate of fifteen million, we're gonna save five million dollars by doing this now. So I spent four years reading all of these documents. We did look at a lot of alternatives. We did the Muddy Creek Project, which was an alternative. There's been a lot of thought and effort that went into this. And it's not a celebration of spending money to me because I'm against how much money this town is spending. And I have been for a couple of years. But this is certainly an accomplishment worth noting and not as a celebration. But it is a milestone that we hit.
Just, we've kind of gotten off subject. But the reason we haven't looked at the Harwich Port versus the East Harwich, the key continually comes up, is that Harwich Port's not, doesn't empty into one of our abeyments. And so it's not part of one of our regulatory requirements nor of a lawsuit. It's worthwhile doing possibly for economic development. And it might be worthwhile, but it wouldn't change what our CWMP does. What we're trying to take care of Muddy Creek, Pleasant Bay, you know, Allen's Harbor and stuff. It's a separate issue. And I do continually hear that, well, why not Harwich Port? It's separate. It wouldn't help us in cleaning up our abeyments. But the issue at hand is, do we want to have a groundbreaking event or ceremony for? And I think to a market, we would. So if anyone cares to motion that, or we don't need to actually do that. We can just move ahead and get something scheduled.
Okay.
And we'll do that. And it's, Don, you're against it, but--
Don't set up a chair for me.
Okay. Moving on to the gazebo, cemetery gazebo relocation discussion. Joe, you want to--
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On, following town meeting on June fourth, the cemetery commission met and they took a vote indicating that the use of the land for pet cemetery, pet crematory was no longer necessary. That was the extent of their vote. However, after that, the cemetery administrator made contact with me as procurement to ask if the gazebo at that location could be sold to an outside party. The first reaction was there would have to be several steps, declaring it surplus, so on and so forth. But if it were ever to be sold to the general public, it would have to be done so in accordance with procurement laws and probably through auction or other method. Since her inquiry, she's advised me that the board, excuse me, the commission, the cemetery commission is preferring to retain the gazebo and they would like to move it from there to Evergreen Cemetery. She did reach out to say that they would make payment to the town, I presume, general fund for the cost of the gazebo. So the original purpose of this was perhaps to have the board voted as surplus. However, since then, cemetery commission has expressed an interest to retain the property and move it elsewhere to their span of control.
And I left this on the agenda because I thought it was worthwhile to have a discussion. Everyone knew what was happening here. And I think Joe's, the estimate of what they paid for the gazebo is around forty-two hundred dollars.
I think it was forty-one and change.
That would then come back to our general fund. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah. This is my first time here, so I don't know what I'm doing. But I came today with a paper. I live at Pine Oaks Three, Face Street, off Oak Street on Layton's Lane. And we have seen that gazebo on Queen Anne Road. And I was, we were trying to find out who we could talk to, if out of the kindness of their heart, if they would like to donate it to us. Because where I live, we lost a big tree. And so we have a nice space there now. And the section I'm at, there's like eighteen of us and only nine of us come out. The other people are kind of a little on the old side, you know, just a little. And so they don't come out. So we're hoping if we could get a gazebo with, you know, shading and kind of like protected, it would draw them to come out. Because like when we had that tornado, a lot of us went up to the community room, you know, where we live and hung out and stuff. And a lot of these people didn't come out. And for days, you know, people fellowshiped and whatever. And we thought if somebody would like to donate the gazebo to us and help us get it there, maybe it would give these, and I sent a letter and I don't know if you guys got it. And it would be, help maybe it be in the center to get some of these people to come out. Of course, we don't have any money.
Well, I appreciate you. Great explanation. Just reiterate, I think what Joe's getting at, that the process we have is, is that it's a cemetery's gazebo now to do what they want. If they decided that they did not want the gazebo, we would, as a board, have to vote to have it surplus asset, if you will. And then it'd be offered to the other town departments. And if no other town department wanted it, and then it would be put out to bid or whatever we want to do, to someone outside of town, which you are. So right now, it seems like if a cemetery wants to keep it, they get first dibs on it. There's not much we can do with that.
Well, is there any way I could go talk to them?
Sure can.
Basically, what he's telling you is we can't grant your request. As great a request as it is, it's against the state law. We can't just give away town property.
No, I understand.
All the taxpayers bought it. And even the cemetery commission, they can't give it away. It would have to be, it would have to go up for sale and everybody in the community would have an option to bid on it.
Does anybody know anybody that would like to donate one to us?
There's a lot of people on TV and through the media watching. So that's possible.
And I guess, you know, given the great case you made for giving the loss of the tree and the need to have sort of a community gathering point, you, through your presentation here, you will have reached out to, I know, I'm a member of the local Kiwanis Club. I believe there's probably a Rotarian or a Lions Club member either here or watching. And all of these groups are typically, typically make donations to these sorts of endeavors. And if you want to send your, leave your name and phone number, I can--
Yeah, I would.
I can help you get in touch with those groups and see if we can put together--
Well, I appreciate that because we also wrote a paper to where we live because they always have to have meetings, you know, to okay everything. And I figured, we all figured if it was something given to us, why would they say no?
Yeah, yeah. So--
So what do I do now? Sit down?
Yeah.
But if you could leave your name and number and I'll get, I'll give you a call and we'll see what we can do.
Should I write it down now?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Michael?
If I may. Joe, correct me if I'm wrong. The town of Harwich owns the gazebo, not the cemetery. It was paid for out of the general fund.
You could be correct, and I probably misspoke. I can tell you that the administrator, cemetery administrator is asking--
She wants to buy it off of us.
Right.
Okay.
Transfer funds.
Right. Because coming in here tonight, obviously, I knew the procurement part of this, but I thought, you know, why not put it down at Island Pond Cemetery by the duck pond and name it after Jimmy Marsline? Because we're still scratching and looking for something to do in memory of Jimmy Marsline. So certainly a conversation I'd like to have with the cemetery commission, but right now, it's our property.
Right. Okay.
It's not there. So what do we have to do? Do we have to say, do we have to vote to declare it surplus and offer it to the other department heads?
I don't think, well--
I think I'm gonna have to do a little more research, if I may.
Okay. Next on my agenda is AmeriCorps twentieth anniversary recognition. And Amy, thanks for staying around, but--
Mr. Chairman, if I may, while she comes to the microphone, in case she doesn't make reference to it. But in your packet, there's two documents. The first is an email to staff asking that this be placed on the agenda. And then her actual request to the board. The last bullet point in her email says that AmeriCorps was critical in assisting with hazardous tree removal after the recent tornado. I concur with that. I want to draw that out. But I wonder if Amy would also reference that she too did that duty as well and needs to be thanked for that. So that's all I needed to say.
Well, thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
But--
Amy Usowski. I'm not here tonight as your conservation administrator for the town. I'm here as an alum of the AmeriCorps Cape Cod program. If you're, just for everybody's sake, the AmeriCorps Cape Cod program is a ten-month residential program that recruits members from all over the country. And we come to assist the Cape with environmental disaster, or environmental and disaster response needs. It's been a program that is celebrating its twentieth anniversary come this fall, which is a really big feat. It's a very unique program. We're one of the few environmental AmeriCorps programs, very few residential. And so to celebrate this milestone, the alumni of the program, because there's not a lot of money available at the county level, they are contributing some, but the program and the county don't have a lot. So the alumni of the program who are putting together this event, of which I am one of those on the steering committee, if you will, are asking conservation trusts and local towns if they'd be willing to donate a very small amount to help make this weekend, which is going to be September twentieth to twenty-second memorable. Money would essentially go a lot towards feeding people who are coming from all over the place. Harwich is also going to benefit from this weekend because a lot of the alum are actually gonna come here and participate in the Coast Sweep program or the International Coast Sweep Day, which we invite you to come out as well and participate in. So some of the towns, Brewster, Dennis, Harwich, are benefiting from having people from all over the country come and come help clean up the place that they once called home, or some still do call home. So just to highlight a couple of things, teach environmental education in our schools. They go in all over the Cape and bring what's called Wet Fest to the schools. They probably do fifteen different days a year and actually go in and teach environmental education to our kids. Operating shelters during storm events, two years ago, almost single-handedly at-- Operating shelters during storm events. Two years ago, almost single-handedly, at some points, AmeriCorps staffed the tech school here in Harwich for several days when we were out of power. Cleaning trails, helping with general upkeep, participating in our tour to trash and coast sweep cleanups, monitoring conservation lands. Um, we're very fortunate. In the past several years, we've had one member one day a week for the entirety of the year, or the program, um, who's worked with myself specifically in our department and donated their time. Assisting with plover monitoring, restoring dunes, leading educational walks. We don't pay for them. They come and do, this is their work that they do. They gain the experience and, um, hopefully go on to careers in this field. So, um, I'm asking you as an alum of the program, if you would be so kind as to consider helping make this event possible for us.
Thank you, Amy. Amy, uh, brought this to me, and, and AmeriCorps, she's mentioned, has been so helpful through the town with clearing Thompson Field, the trails, uh, disaster areas. Uh, I checked with the town administrator to be sure there was a mechanism we could, uh, we could do this, and, uh, as we say on the agenda, uh, looks like we can, uh, draw this from an unclassified, uh, account. And this is a, a small gesture to, uh, uh, recognize all the stuff they, all the, that you've mentioned. We could go on much longer. Uh, with any discussion or motion? Ed?
Yeah, Ed, well, like Amy, uh, many years ago, I, I am an alumni of the Vista program, Vista, Vista Tacoma, Washington, um, where I served for, oh, fifteen months, actually, is, in their housing programs at the Tacoma Urban League. But, uh, in recognition, uh, to the volunteers that have worked here on, uh, Cape Cod, I'd like to move that we, um, approve expenditure of, uh, three hundred dollars from an unclassified account to the conservation committee for that purpose.
A second.
Any more discussion? Uh, Michael?
I support this.
It's to AmeriCorps, though.
Yeah, I just want to make it very clear, if I may, it's not to the Conservation Commission or Department.
No, it's to AmeriCorps.
It would be, it's being, the funding is being held by the Compact of Conservation Trusts, which is a local nonprofit, so we can expend the money that way.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, that the intent, as I understand the motion, the, it's the unclassified funds account that the dispersment would come from.
Yeah.
Right. To, right. Michael?
So, I guess my question is, what's an unclassified account? How much money do we have in there?
I don't have the balance, um, with me tonight, but I can follow up on that.
Hasn't been classified.
Yeah, can I, can I get a better understanding of what that is and what's in there?
My understanding is that it's a, a general fund available for unclassified activities, um, events such of this nature, things that aren't of an emergency nature, but things that come up that were unforeseen. Uh, the dollar amount sort of relates to that, meaning the three hundred. I will say that the work that, um, AmeriCorps had done through Amy, just in response to tornado in the conservation trails, would have been upwards of two thousand dollars minimum. Not that it's a trade-off, but.
But that's not Michael's question. Let me.
I support it. I just want to know what line item in our budget is unclassified and how much money we put in there.
I can follow up.
We can follow up with that. In the meantime, we'll, uh, we'll have a motion in a second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are you unanimous? Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is vote approve of James Donovan to the, uh, Community Preservation Committee. I understand in this meeting that, uh, our nominating committee has, actually hasn't interviewed him yet. This came to us. Uh, I thought an official route and, and wrongly so, so, uh, Michael.
I was gonna ask that we recommend this to, uh, the interview committee and set up an interview with Mr. Donovan.
We'll do that, so we'll bring this back as soon as, uh, you guys can schedule soon if you can, so we resolve this.
Joe, can you ask, uh, Patty to schedule something?
Okay.
She's starting to put a list together for us. Please.
And to that end, have you settled on, uh, your next meeting?
I sent back my dates. I don't know if Don has.
All right, and I, I ask, because I believe a meeting had been posted.
I think for Friday, for Wednesday. I, I saw it on the, uh, what day is it? Thursday?
Thursday. Thursday at ten-thirty? I'm available.
Okay, good. Moving on to, uh, old business. I'd asked, uh, both Carol and, uh, John to give, give us an update on Sacatacet Harbor. And, uh, if you go, so there's two items in your, uh, in the packet. The first one is a, uh, a brief financial review. And, uh, along with what the debt payment is on that, but, uh, for Sacatacet Harbor, just very briefly, the total source of funds for this, uh, work, both the, uh, the land side and water side was twelve point, though under twelve point, well, twelve million, eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. The use of funds were twelve million, uh, sixteen thousand, forty-five dollars. And, uh, my next question was to then John Redon, is, is this project completely done? Or is there additional expenditures he might, might expect? And, uh, have the right in front of me, but I think the only thing, uh, uh, left from his side is, uh, some landscaping that they will look at this fall. Uh, wasn't appropriate in the spring to finish that up. So, is there any discussion or comments on this? Michael?
John, if I, if I may, ask you a question? I guess first, the harbor looks amazing. A lot of people enjoying it, obviously. I think it seemed like it was a very busy summer down there. I was probably one of the biggest critics through the process, but it really did come out fast.
Thank you.
We talked to, we talked to, when we got all the estimates, we talked about doing, there was gonna be probably, or maybe, a give back of a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand. If, if I remember what we borrowed and what we were given, that's gone, right? We've spent all the money, or is there going to be a give back to the residents?
We have not. We have, um, about ninety thousand, um, remaining that hasn't been spent.
Okay, so after landscaping, it would be fair to say that we will probably give some of that money back?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then I guess the next question, and I'll probably just save it and ask you to put it back on next week. It's not for you, John.
Okay.
Yeah.
Liquor license. Three months ago, we determined that we had a fifty-seat or fifty-five-seat restaurant.
Yeah.
And we voted to give an eighty-seat liquor license.
Right.
And that night, after that conversation happened, we talked about going back and modifying the liquor license.
Yeah, let me, uh, uh, Michael there, uh, I think you raised, or someone did. That was one question. We've had questions in the past about the site plan. And, uh,
That was the next question.
The liquor, I'll go back to your liquor license. That will be, I think at this point, since the season's about over, the best thing to do is, is correct that when the license is renewed uh, for next season. Because it's clear that, uh, the Board of Health had a fifty-seat capacity and the license somehow got through the eighty-seat, and I think we've, Joe, I think, uh, I've already had discussions with, uh, uh, the, uh, lease fee of that property. So, we'll, we'll address that with, I think, when the liquor license comes up in the, uh, this winter. The, uh, the site plan, uh, I've been exploring that, and, uh, uh, our town engineer is, uh, working on the, uh, a new site plan. It has to go before the, uh, uh, planning board. And that, I'm, I'm hoping will happen in the next few weeks. They're finalizing that to address, so we're trying to address both the, uh, site plan and correct the liquor license, so it, it agrees with the Board of Health. Did that answer, Michael?
Kinda. Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm veering off in a different direction because of the way this was posted, a Sacatacet, uh, update. I'm curious, uh, have we been getting payments from the dockside? And if so, how much has been banked? I ask this because Orleans had their problem last year with Liam's, and then they gave food trucks and brought them in, and one of them got, managed to get to the end of the season, have no money, didn't give the town any money, and then took off and said, I don't have any money to give you until next year. So, I, I want the citizens to know, have we been getting money and how much is it?
You want me to answer that, Joe, or you?
Yeah, and speaking with the finance director, she said she has been billing, um, the four installments of six thousand each and has been receiving upon, receiving payment for those bills. So, I believe, uh, we're up to date for June and July.
I, I will confirm, we have received three payments, um, as scheduled, very timely, six thousand apiece. We have another six thousand, uh, to go. The minimum lease was twenty-four thousand dollars. And, uh, and if their gross revenue, seven percent of gross revenue exceeds that, then we'll receive the difference of that.
Don? Yeah, um, still on that same subject, uh, I'm curious who, who's doing the contract administration for that, because I gave them a pass at the early part of the season, but they were obligated to stay open a certain number of hours. That was in the contract. Is there anybody that's actually making sure that's happening?
Making sure that they're achieving the hours that they are.
That they were obligated to under the contract, yeah.
Yes, sir. I mean, I'm there every day, and.
Till ten?
No, he's open till eight o'clock. In the evening.
That's not what the contract said. Um, okay.
He's open at seven in the morning for breakfast, and he's staying open until eight o'clock in the evening.
Then why do we have a liquor license that goes till eleven?
Because we voted it.
We voted it, yeah.
John didn't.
Yeah, well, that wasn't part of that.
We need to change that.
We, as I said, we'll, we'll, we need to correct both the, uh, you know, when we do the liquor license, now we've had your experience, correct that. Wish you will.
And it, Mr. Chair, finally, who's gonna do the reconciliation? Because the, the other thing that I know, and I've seen that, not that I believe everything I see on social media, but I believe, uh, some of this stuff is that a lot of people are saying that they weren't getting receipts to get called back. The ramifications of that aren't me worrying about whether they didn't get their fried clams. The ramifications are if, is it really running through the, the register system, because we are owed a minimum amount, but we also are owed amount above that if the gross goes up to that level. Uh, who's gonna be doing the audit of that?
Uh, I believe, uh, the finance director in her shop will be doing that.
Offsite, okay.
I will not be. I think Carol and her shop will be.
Is, is there any way that people can make sure that they're spitting out receipts? Because that's the way we're gonna know.
I'll talk to the owner, uh, to make sure that he's giving receipts. I know he's got a cash register that, um, is accounting for. He's given me his June statement. His July statement is forthcoming. I, I will talk to him and make sure that people are getting receipts.
Uh, Ed?
Well, I've been, been a patron at the Dockside Cafe numerous times at breakfast, lunch and dinner, and I've never even had to ask for a receipt. It's always been, uh, presented, so. If it's, somebody's not getting a receipt, I, uh, imagine it's, uh, uh, not because it, it isn't being run through their cash register, it's simply, uh, you, you get the receipt and you get this whole vibrator thing. And people tend to pick up the vibrator thing and walk off and leave their receipts behind. In terms of getting your food, having the vibrator thing is the important part of the transaction.
Well, we can check that. Mostly the cash registers, uh, are, are programmed to keep, uh, keep all those records. So, we can, you're almost looking at validation of the computer system, Don, as much as anything.
I, I get that. I'm just saying that the terms of the contract are only meaningful if you actually follow through and look at it.
Agreed. I'm just saying there's a couple of different mechanisms to get there, which we need to, we can explore. Okay, any more than that, you know, some of this information tonight, I'm putting forward to try to keep, keep people as informed as we can. And, uh, and we'll just try and clear all this up. Uh, next item would be is Housing Coordinator. This, uh, I think caused some confusion in the past, and, uh, I tried to word this carefully, uh, second year with, uh, the, uh, Community Development, uh, what's their final P stand for? Program?
Partnership.
Partnership, thank you. Uh, vote is recommended by the Affordable House Trust to extend their, uh, contract for one year.
I would move that we, we extend the contract for the year beginning July first, ending to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty.
Right. And that is, uh, so, Michael?
Yeah, just one, one comment. Uh, the legal opinion wasn't in the packet. Can we get the legal opinion into the packet just, uh, so the public can see the legal opinion?
We can. I actually thought we had, Don?
Yeah, since Michael's touching on that, and there were emails flying all last week, it was as much what wasn't asked as what was asked, uh, which is why I wanted us to renew the contract. Uh, at no point did I reference that Mr. Giorgio had changed his mind. But he was never asked whether or not the Board of Selectmen could, since it issued the contract, renew the contract. He was only asked, could the trust, uh, do that? So, the cleanest way is I got the trust to vote to recommend to us to extend the contract and then have us, who were signatories to the original contract, exercise the option.
We, we can do that. I, I was a little careful putting that in there because of names in the, in the emails. I'd rather, uh, keep it as, uh, I'll see, as much as I can. We'll put it back, we'll put that in. But we now have this motion in a second. Any more discussion?
Well, just to go, um, what emails were flying last week? I didn't get any.
I know.
You know?
There, there were a lot of emails that didn't include everyone.
Uh, you don't, don't know about that, but, uh.
Uh, just for the public, as now we're talking in code.
Yeah, not trying to.
The housing, the housing, the Housing Trust, Harwich Housing Trust, um, was going to renew a contract that the Board of Selectmen voted. And the question came, can the trust award a contract extension on a contract that another body voted on and signed? So, that's the only emails that we're talking about. There was a disagreement on whether or not they had the right to renew a contract. In essence, they'd be going out for a new contract, which they should go out for procurement on a new contract. This board signed the original contract, so this board is voting to renew the contract so that we keep our housing coordinator. That's all that's going on.
And, and after the Affordable Housing Trust asked you to do so.
I beg to differ. There were more emails than that, but I'm not taking that up now. It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
And I guess personally, in the future, if we're passing around emails that are, uh, gonna be on something we're gonna be voting on, we ought to make sure that everybody gets them, and some of us don't get left out.
That would be the town administrator who sent the email.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next on the agenda is the D H Y, uh, update. And, uh, I loaded up with, uh, a lot of information on this. I don't really, uh, expect that we've taken action tonight. There has been a lot of, uh, discussion about the fall meeting, however, uh, the D H Y, and, uh, you know, we'll take that item up first. All, and to summarize, the other, the reason for moving forward are that, that neighboring towns, Yarmouth and Dennis, have decided to hold a special fall town meeting to consider the spatial legalization. Uh, my opinion, and I, I never try to speak for Don, but he might even agree with me on this one, is that, uh, we're not quite ready for that here yet. We have, uh, our focus has been on the, on East Harwich. We haven't had a lot of, uh, the public meetings that are necessary to move this forward. Uh, we still have, uh, some questions, and it, and it's been kind of a moving target on exactly what the costs are for the, uh, for the D H Y. And, uh, lost my train of thought, but, oh, the other issue was that, uh, as of last week, we didn't think that was gonna get through the, uh, the State House, and, and at least not for several weeks, and I think the day after we had the meeting, it passed through the State House, but it still has to go through the Senate and be signed by the governor, which still would press us for time. but it still has to go through the senate and be signed by the governor, which still would press us for time to get in the fall meeting. And it's, I know I'm getting calls from other towns and from, but for our purposes, there doesn't seem to be a big penalty for holding off until the spring meeting enables to have a full discussion. So that's my quick two cents. Don, since I spoke for you?
And by the spring meeting, you mean the annual town?
The annual town meeting, sorry.
I largely agree with, with the chair said, but the, since I was the one who brought it up at the, the meeting, there was total unanimity of opinion that they, they, they're not holding special town meetings in the other towns. They hold an annual fall town meeting. They don't, they had not, at the time of our meeting, written an article to even put on their warrant. The recognition existed when we were talking about the legislative timing was, yeah, it's great if it does pass the house sooner, but that doesn't mean that the senate's going to pass the language exactly the way the house did. We needed to wait to see, it was just assigned a docket number. So I'm not sure when that vote would occur. We haven't really educated our citizenry and I think that one of the biggest faults we've had in the past is we haven't given everybody a time, time to sit and digest. What are we getting for what are we giving? No one was, in my understanding, going to take this up in the fall. They were all going to wait to do more education, allow the citizenry, each of the three towns. Because if one town goes down, the whole thing goes. We wanted to make sure that everybody got the information properly and it was done in an orderly way and it would be bring, it would be brought up in May town meeting for everybody.
I think currently there, they are, they are planning on, the other towns are planning to put this as an article on the fall town meeting.
John Giorgio had not actually vetted any language at all as of five or six days ago.
Let me finish, Don. It would be nice if all three towns did it at the same time. We don't have to do that just because they did, however. We need to think what's best for Harwich in this case. And so in any case, that's my, and I put in, on the DHY, I put in the last agenda. The, a lot of these are draft. There's draft presentation of the current, current events. Some of this will change as we go forward, so, but just trying to get all the information out there to the rest of you and, and to the public. Let me also comment, and I didn't get a chance to, I was going to add this. There is now a DHY website and the email or the website address is dhycleanwaters.org. O-R-G. And that lists more than probably most people, they, they list the minutes of every meeting we've had. They list the, I think they list the agendas, they list, list what's going on. The refers back to the towns, a lot of information, various scenarios we've gone through. And so that's out there for, it just went live, I think, last Wednesday or Thursday. But again, it's dhycleanwaters.org. Will hopefully bring everyone up to speed with what's going on, on this potential cooperation with other towns to cover West Harwich. Yes?
In light of where we are, just on the local sewerage.
Yeah.
This is a hundred million dollar project. How, how are we going to know that if we support this project, that the estimate is somewhere closer to actual numbers? I'd hate to go and vote this and find out 130, 40 million.
My, I can, for me, just personally, I don't see us going to town meeting with anything less than a bid.
Okay. That works for me. Can't miss that.
That I totally agree with.
That scares me.
Shouldn't, shouldn't scare you, we're following the rules.
Okay, is, and what we'll do is, is, you know, we've had this discussion, we've now, and I'll, we'll continue down there in the committee to be sure we bring as, as much as we can, with the understanding that this is still in motion. There's a lot of dialogue going on.
The September meeting.
September, we're having a September meeting on the, help me out, Don, what's the date of that?
September 19th, I think it was.
September 19th at 6 o'clock at the community, excuse me, yeah, 19th, that's right. We looked at 12th and 19th, 19th, at 6 o'clock in the community center. The three towns will be present and we'll go through again, an update of DHY, wherever one is, the details. And I encourage everyone to attend that. Okay?
It's going to be taped.
And it will be taped. Michael?
Can we ask that that DHY clean water get added to our wastewater section on our website?
That's the intent and I'll. It's not there yet, I checked, but, but the, that was, that's the intent to do so.
Okay. And as far as DHY goes, it's August and we really have not, it's almost the end of August. And we've done, I'm still waiting for a question that I asked, I don't know, six months ago. So I don't think we're even remotely close to even going to the public with this. And to earlier conversation, as this starts to hit our tax bills, we really need to map out for people what this will mean. And my question, just to ask it again, is what is the changing in phases going to cost the town? How much earlier are we going to have to pay? Or how much later are we going to have to pay a hundred million dollars that Alan just, that he just mentioned? The second question, Larry, and I think it's important for you and Don. If we buy into Dennis, Harwich, Yarmouth, and we build a facility in Dennis, how many feet of pipe are we going to have to run? And how many homes are going to be sued? Versus if we build a plant at the dump, how many feet of pipe for how many homes?
Yeah.
And what's the actual comparison, doing it on our own versus doing it? Because if I read what you presented tonight correctly, Harwich is getting 15% of the flow into this facility in Dennis.
Yeah.
And we're paying 27% of the cost to do it. So 15% flow, but we're paying 27%. So I don't understand any of what's happening right now, except the political legislation piece.
Yeah. And that's because it's still moving somewhat? But, but those are agreed. Okay? I'm not ignoring your question, I'm just trying to get it there. Trying to get the answers to that. Next on the agenda is information on the sewer collection phase two, contracts one and two. I, I'm for, I did put together a cheat sheet, and I'll put this in a minute. I didn't have a chance to, and I had help from some people just getting the bid prices on this and the knowledge on it. But. And I think you were on these emails. I did send a lot of emails out asking questions about if we. What's the penalty if we don't move ahead on contract two in case of the 0% funding and the loan forgiveness? And it's, the CDM Smith asked a roll letter to DEP a couple of weeks ago, asking for an extension of the funding to the end of the year. They're, they're, they haven't got, we haven't got a response for that yet. But my understanding is that's pretty much considered from verbal conversation to be pro forma. So in that regard, it's not a financial penalty for delaying. You know, there's reasons to move forward, but the financial one, that's not, not part of it. The second question I had is if we, if we do do a contact three to complete phase two and did that in the spring, would, would we be penalized for that, not gaining the 0% funding and the loan forgiveness? And my understanding, and that is, is that because we have a 0% funding contract in place for phase two, that that will be extended through the entirety of phase three, whether we do the contract at town meeting this fall, we will do so, or hold off until next spring. So again, from that financial aspect, there's not a penalty for delaying those discussions until next spring. So I like to put that off the table. And then the question is, and we don't, I really wasn't looking for a vote tonight. I want everyone to digest all this. Because then the question is, we've had, we had a bid opening on, Joe, I think, Thursday?
Thursday at 2:00, yep.
And. And so we can approve that, that contract to take, get started and go ahead with that to get these complete that phases of, that really be two thirds of phase two. Or we cannot do that. You know, there's a penalty, of course. If we delay, prices will go up, we have inflation and all the things that happen. But. If I may, let me just very briefly state the summary on this for everyone listening. I have a paper in front of me, so I'll read some numbers to you. And we'll put this in a minute, so it's on the website. Just for memory's sake, what town voted on for phase two was 18 and a half billion dollars. Contract one was bid at 11 million, 11 point, roughly 11.4 billion dollars. We have to add into that a 5% contingency fund, which comes though under $600,000 according to DEP regulations. And so what we have available for contract two is 6 and a half million dollars roughly. That will get us, and I'll put a map on here, that will get us through about 400 of the total number of properties on phase two. There were 600 initially, which leaves in, we weren't the goal to of contract three. Look, just about 200 properties yet to be sewed. And the estimate I got from that, and of course, this is a very rough estimate, as we know from the past, including the contingency, contingency fee would be between eight and nine million dollars. So as you point out, we still have some big discussions going forward. Any more discussion on this? I've just tried to lay out as best I can where we are.
Mr. Chair, I just want to point out that the email exchanges that you just had with DOR and about the SRF funding being at 0% were identical to what I did when I sat in Carol Capola's office and had a conference call in June. Having our financial experts that we contract with call DOR, at that point, there was never a 15 million dollar difference. It was between 3.3 and 5. They couldn't ascertain what the buy down for principal would be because until June 30th, when they knew everyone's requests, and there was a finite pool and they had to divide it by what those requests were. But the SRF funding, I had it in writing then, and it's in writing again. We retained it at one, at 0% if we just merely requested it. So that's number one. But number two, in terms of whether we want to award what we got and take a risk or, or not do that and take a risk, I'm just going to repeat again. The original article, Article 14 in 2018's town meeting warrant was for 22 million 450. By the way, that's, we're going to be asking you for eight to 10 million more now. And the explanation, which was put in there by us, it wasn't put in there by the attendees. It was printed in the warrant. Phase two of our comprehensive wastewater management plan requires design and construction of a watershed collection system. In fiscal 18, the design dollars and our interminable agreement with Chatham were funded. The fiscal 19 request includes the actual construction costs of the collection system, also including the tie-in costs with Chatham and their pump station and piping to their treatment facility. This will fully implement phase two of our regulatory required plan. It isn't going to. I, I refuse to vote for a follow-on contract that doesn't go back to town meeting on the one hand. And on the other hand, I'm, I'm looking at this saying, why do we even award the first one? We, we didn't have enough money. We knew we didn't have enough money. And again, no one's got it on their tax bill yet, no one. So they don't even know what the implications are of adding eight to 10 million because they haven't been charged yet for the first borrowings. It's off by a large percentage. And it wasn't necessarily because the estimates. As a matter of fact, this is the poster child for why you get bids, you go to town meeting, you know what you're giving and you know what you're getting. That's what the state law was designed to do, to get authorization, to do leases or contracts that require town meeting approval. Any of this nonsense about trust us, we're going to be able to make a good decision and you're going to do really well, has got to stop. We got to get to the point where we go to town meeting, we know what we're bidding on because we've got bids in our hands and we either accept those bids or we say, I'm sorry, we can't do that. Go back and do something different. So again, I'm reiterating, even if you have bids, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, this information is there now and we'll bring it back next week for, next meeting for a vote.
Two weeks.
Two weeks for a vote.
Stan Pastuzak, Norris Drive. Just one question on that, Larry. You said 6 and a half million for 400 homes and potentially another 9 million for the remaining 200?
No, I'm saying that the, if we do the, if we do contracts one and two is now laid out, we, we would get about 400 of the 600 homes covered. The remaining 200 homes, properties, I'm guessing somewhere between, and this is a guess at this point, I talked to them, between seven to eight, nine million dollars. We don't know that for sure.
Which is about a 50% higher than what we originally estimated.
If you look at the, at the total estimate, taking that into account from the regional construction part of these, we're about 30% higher than we expected.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to pester a little more. If, if we've spent, say, and I'm making this up, one ten thousandth of the expense of this total project so far, you can still back down. Just because you've spent one ten thousandth doesn't mean you're tied into the, the whole thing. It's not logical to feel that. It would be a terrible, terrible waste. And we can do other things to avoid being sued by the state.
Okay. Michael?
I just, going back an item if I can, but it also pertains to this. Why are we waiting until next week or two weeks to vote?
Because I didn't want to bury you with too much information and not have a discussion and then vote, but we.
I mean, are we, are we, are we still thinking about a fall town meeting?
I don't think we are.
I mean, I, I just don't understand why we wouldn't vote not to have a fall town meeting because we're not ready. And the reason we were talking about having a fall town meeting was simply because of DHI.
Right.
So I don't see, I don't see how, based on your comments and Don's comments, I'm a no voter. I'm a no vote definitely. So even if Stephen came back and voted yes, it's not going to make any difference.
Yeah.
So I don't know why we don't just take that off the table.
Not on the agenda that we were going to vote on it.
Doesn't have to be on the agenda. Attorney General's rules, if something, if a subject is on an agenda, it's reasonably assumed that a vote can be taken. And I've called, I don't know, no less than six times on that. So you can vote it. If the chair decides not to vote it, that's his decision, not, not, not my decision. But I don't see why we would wait and delay it. There's some angst out there in the public about us going to a town meeting in the fall.
Well, I've already, I've already said where I'm going at, so I don't have a real.
So I, I would, if, I mean, if it's appropriate, I'd go back up and make a motion.
Sure, make it.
I move that we do not have a fall town meeting.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post?
All right. Now, going to sewer collection, if you want to wait for the full board on this, it's fine.
I want to wait for the full board on this one.
My, my comments are, I will not support and cannot support issuing contract number two without going back to town meeting on contract three.
Yeah.
Because I, I think that, I think we're doing a disservice. And you mentioned inflation. Well, that's how our CWMP went from two hundred and forty million to three hundred million this year, because they gave it to us based on two thousand and twelve numbers, modified in two thousand and sixteen. So I, I do now understand inflation a little bit more. But between now and May, I think our savings will be much greater on a larger contract, with larger contractors bidding on a larger contract, without mobilization costs, without extra detail. Instead of piecing it together, I think we would serve the town much better with a much larger contract, and letting the voters decide if they want to vote on it or not. So that's just, it's on the agenda, so that's my, that's my comment.
This one I do want to hold until Steve is back to have a full board.
And I do, because it's on the contract, also want to mention, and this, Larry, is something that I've asked you for, and it's not on the agenda, but I'm still waiting for the answer, as to why the town administrator told us in May, we had to vote contract one, or we were going to lose the SRF funding, and we were going to lose fifteen, and he said on several occasions, higher than fifteen million dollars by not voting that. So CDM Smith, and I've gone back and looked at it, David Young sat here and said, we're going to lose our SRF funding if we don't vote. Chris Clark had said fifteen to twenty-one million, five to ten times to this board, and that we were going to lose that much money. So I, I, the document that we all got last week, two weeks ago, showed the life of the loan maximum is five point nine million. So what was the scare tack being, scare tactic being used to save fifteen million to twenty-one million? I want that answer. And why did we, why were we told that we were going to lose SRF funding when we weren't? This email that you presented tonight says we would have lost debt forgiveness, which is real, and that is a real number. So maybe that's why we had to vote. But I want to know why this board is constantly being given false information. And it's documented. Bill writes about it, and it's on the internet. And anyone can go back and watch it. It's constantly false. And I want that answer.
Well, we all asked the same question at the time with Dave Young, but we'll, we'll see where we go with that. Okay, Stan?
Can I just ask one question? Contract two, which went out to bid, that's for the remaining part, where this contract three you're talking about is really, that's not going out to bid, or we don't need to go to bid. Contract two should be for the remaining of the project, right?
It's not. It doesn't. Contract two is not enough to complete the project. That's our whole dilemma.
People were pulled out to take a hit for the team.
Did, okay.
Okay, we'll bring that, we'll bring that one back, this one back for a vote when, when we have a full board. Next item is the noise committee update. I'd asked about that, and also, we should have a selectman liaison to that. Don?
Mr. Chair, I moved that Michael McCaskill be the liaison.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? My only comment on that is, and I know you guys are working on an interview, that we have a well-balanced membership, that they're both business and residents. So we, you know, we meet our, our desire of having a compromise that, that works. Michael?
If we take the vote, then I was going to give you some comments on when we start.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you, you asked me to, go ahead.
I just wish you good luck. I remember my liaison days with the clatter. A lot, a lot of nights listening to noise in the wind.
Well, I, I will tell you this. I did check, I did check in the, this year we've had, we have three confirmed noise complaints, and we're having a hearing on that with our hearing officer. And then we've only had one other noise complaint against one of the other businesses.
Yeah, so that's good news.
So four out of the whole summer. It doesn't sound like we have a huge problem downtown. The reason that I asked to put this on the agenda is some, some of the people that we have picked are emailing and asking when the meetings are going to start, and there was nobody to facilitate the meeting.
So you're going, we're going to work on giving that help.
As far as balance goes, because I know, Larry, you've taken some, some people have said to you that they don't think there's any balance. We only have one business on there right now. We only need one more seat filled, and that is a business seat. The rest of it, whether they're pro, pro noise or not pro noise, answered the questions correctly in the interview, and we did hold some back. And I think we have a very balanced board. Including the gentleman made twenty-one noise complaints last year is on the committee. So anyone wants to say it's a bias, it's not something.
No, and, and that was where I'm going at. My, my goal is that something this sensitive, that we have all the inputs.
Well, I will tomorrow send out the email and pick a date for the first meeting. We are still looking for one business to be on the committee. So if anyone comes forward, we appreciate it.
Okay. Town administrators' reports. Joe?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the administrator. You know, we have our, our big event tomorrow at Sagu Tuckett Harbor. It's going to be preceded by the Seaport Council meeting, which will take place here at two PM. Harbor Master's done a great job of not only updating staff and, and the board on the events, but has taken great efforts to get everything ready tomorrow.
Stand up and take a bow, John.
Thank you again, John.
Joe?
The next item came to us through, I believe, Affordable Housing Trust and related to Habitat. The, there's an affordable home, Habitat home, that is up for resale, both Habitat and the third party, I apologize, I'm drawing a blank, have deferred their right of first refusal, which means the matter goes before the board. So they will, this will be on the agenda for September ninth. There is an individual who can speak to this far better than I'm fumbling right now, to give you all the background and all the options. So we did want to alert you to the fact that that will be coming up on September ninth. As, as required by the charter and the budget process, the administrator did release his capital budget form to staff and department heads. That went out on August twenty-third. Let's get quite a bit of information in there as well, as far as upcoming meetings, forms, and activities, so.
Joe, could you, could you put that in our packet or email to the board so we all?
Certainly, yep. Yeah, there's the email.
Just for informational, what the form looks like?
Yep, absolutely. I know that there was a request to have the emergency management director come before the board for his after action. He did host a meeting at the emergency ops center a week ago, or maybe two weeks now, just to do a review with staff and, and other parties. So he is scheduled to come before you on September ninth. He couldn't make it this evening.
And, and that was my request, because I had a meeting, and I think for the same reason he's doing it, Lee is doing it. We should be aware of what worked, what didn't work. And secondly, are there items that we, we could do a better job from what we said in, in helping out? Michael?
What, what's the input into that? Who inputs into that? So the report's going to come out.
Well, I think...
Who is in the meeting?
So it was obviously Public Safety, DPW, Administration, the administrator, myself, the engineer, excuse me, folks that have worked in emergency management in the past. So the left-hand side over here was there, as well as a representative from MEMA. So there's a, you know, a standard, that protocol that he goes through. There was a frank discussion amongst everybody, and questions related to MEMA. And so from that, he has to report back to MEMA, and then obviously will present to the board. I just want to quickly add to that, that the, the MEMA component on the funding, we did finish that early and on time for their deadline. Unfortunately, we heard through the Cape Cod Times that we didn't meet the threshold. We suspected that. But as the point person on that, I'm anxiously awaiting direction from MEMA as to what would happen next beyond what we've heard from our legislative delegation. But hopefully, we'll get some direction from them.
Yeah, are, Joe, are, are you or someone tracking the, our own state or, on spatial, you know, when they were all here, they're talking about, we didn't get the FEMA money there. There was an opportunity, they would be applying for special funding through the state. Do you know where that stands?
Yeah, that's the expectation. I know Representative Peak's office has been running point on that. And we stand ready to, to show our numbers and, and add to if allowed.
Okay.
The, the one point, I think we were just over one point two five. You know, that was a MEMA number, but we know that our real costs all in are much closer to the original number of three and a half million. So hopefully, we'll get an audience and someone who's interested.
It is. I just was wondering, my question was, are, are you tracking that with Representative Peak, or with Senator Seer?
We haven't been, yeah, she, yeah, she was clued in on, copied in on our, our submittal. We have all of the documentation for the first round, the three million number, as well as subsequent.
Could you follow up and just see what the status is?
Sure. With, Don?
Yeah, I was going to say something earlier, Mr. Chair, when we were talking about AmeriCorps. But it is kind of sad. I mean, the MEMA number is lower, and I don't know about everybody else. I had insurance people come in, and unless, if you lose two, three, four trees, I mean, Ed has the mother of all trees that came down by the root ball. I've got one that's like the sword of Damocles. It's hanging over my gazebo, but it's that far away.
You want to give that gazebo away?
There's a ton of people, I'm not going to give it away. But there's a ton of people out there who experienced unrecoverable losses, because the insurance company won't pay unless the tree actually hit your house. So, I mean, everybody's minimizing this off Cape, but it was a fairly substantial hit that everybody took. The town took it, the homeowners did. And they're not going to find anybody helping them. And you're not, even what they were talking about earlier with AmeriCorps, that helping fix your house is probably a primary thought. But I know the Cape and Islands Realtors Association, their money is only going to go if you have a structure that, that gets hurt. I don't know about you guys, but if you go a thousand bucks a tree, I don't have that kind of money. And I don't think most people who live in this town and who have lived in it for years...
That's what we're hoping, that we'll get help through the spatial funding.
Yeah, but you know, the, the issue is not only is there the cost of having the downed tree removed, but the, the trees, as part of landscaping, have some inherent value of their own that needs, it's either represented in a diminution of the value of your house, or the cost of bringing in a substantial tree to try and replace it.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to mercifully tap out and say, that's the administrator's report for the saving.
Thank you, Jill. Selectmen's reports. Michael?
Joe, great job tonight. First meeting that you've run for the, for us, anyway. Two things. One, the, it was, someone called and alerted me to the rental of our cultural center to some group to spend the night for a week. I didn't know anything about that. We didn't vote on that. I have not called Carolyn yet, because I'm not going to call Carolyn. But I would like to understand what paperwork we filled out, to make sure if somebody fell down the metal staircase, that we're going to be covered, and if they, if we were insured for that, and whose decision it was, and why we made it.
Fair enough.
I'd actually like to speak to that at the meeting, on behalf of staff. The, the group that is presently still housed at the cultural center is Southern Baptist Disaster Recovery Team. This particular group had folks from the state of Maine, but we know they're drawing upon other colleagues across the country. They're filling the gap following the Team Rubicon. Both Southern Baptist Disaster Recovery Team and Team Rubicon are affiliated with MEMA. So they're here doing work on behalf of town residents, as well as other towns' residents that were impacted. As we were looking for space for Team Rubicon, when, during the tornado event and the follow-up, they had opted for housing in Yarmouth. But we were in the mix for them. It just didn't work for them. Southern Baptist group has reached out. They did want to avail themselves of the cultural center. So administration vetted that with staff. And we made it abundantly clear as to what our expectations were. And there may be some instances where the vendor fell short of that. That's the best they can offer at this point. But it is related to storm recovery for our most disadvantaged and underrepresented demographics.
Which I think is, I think it's a great service. Are we covered to have people staying in the cultural center? We have a lot of people's property in that cultural center. And are we covered to have people sleeping in that? And that, that's my question. We don't have to get into it tonight. It's not on the agenda. But I would just like to get some...
Maybe we can get some more, some feedback on liability issues, and be sure we're covered on that. Be good.
I think that's all I have.
Ed?
Nope.
Don?
Yeah, two things, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to remind everybody that President Tavares is coming on Wednesday. And he'll be at the Harwich Community Center from Brava, Cabo Verde.
A big deal.
Which I think is an immense deal. So I urge everybody to be part of that, because it's part of the heritage of Harwich. And in talking to all of the parties and doing some studying, it actually doesn't go back to the early part of the twentieth century. It goes back to the early part of the nineteenth century, in different influxes. So it's part of the tapestry of the town, always has been. And I think we should celebrate that together. That's the happy thought. The unhappy thought is, imagine my surprise when I called Town Hall today, and option number two now is the administrator's office. And there is no reference anywhere on the menu of the selectmen, if anybody were to call this town. The only people who are elected now no longer have a phone that's being answered. And I'm wondering, since six weeks ago, the selectmen lost their office in the selectmen administrator's office, and I actually quipped to the town administrator at that point, what's next? The, the staff isn't going to actually deal with anything that's part of our problems? Because it's the selectmen's administrator's office. That's what the flow chart says. That's what the town has been operating under for three decades. So I don't know where anybody wants to go with this. But I mean, what's next? Are we going to change the lock on the door?
Joe, at first I heard about us coming in tonight.
Sure, no, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I was made aware of the issue this afternoon by staff. I asked them to follow up on it. The response we got from the administrator of the system is that the option two, or all the options, are as they were when they were first entered, when the system was installed several years ago. That's the report that was given back to me by staff.
That is absolutely not true. I've called the office before, and option two always was...
I can just make a distinction. I can assure you that what I said is what I was told. That part is true. I can't get to the veracity of what was told to me.
Well, we can, you'll follow up, though, because that's a mistake.
Well, the reason I'm bringing this up is because I am extremely...
There's no conscious cessation, as far as I know.
Well, I'm extremely concerned that the staff understand that they work for both the town administrator and the board of selectmen, because if that's not the deal, we are literally without any kind of administrative help.
Until I know better, I'm assuming that something went down in the system, and it will be fixed.
I'll follow up on it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ed?
Nope.
I have anything except to comment that Don's been doing yeoman's work on the Cape Verdean Festival, along with others. I think, Michael, you've had a play in that. I can't agree more. This is part of our heritage. We, we need to all be there and celebrate that. It's a fantastic event. And we're going to have everyone in the world there. We're having the, from the island, we're having the, this is titled, the governor. We may have the ambassador there. It's going to be, I'm sure we'll have the, our local politicians to deal, at least I assume so.
And Vinit Damascena was actually born in, on Brava.
And I think we all need to learn more about it. So we'll see you there. Move to adjourn, anyone?
Please do adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
We're leaving.